I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming. We have no visitor signed in wishing to speak and no written communication. Do we have any board committee reports?
Uh, transportation committee met and um, let me get that on. So, we decided we're going to pilot the first student dashboard, which gives us the, where we can see every bus, where every bus is, and then also we're gonna see what the parent app is like this time. Um, I guess last time we tried it was before COVID and it was just so buggy that didn't work very well. Um, we're gonna try it again and uh, it's in May, and then we're meeting again in uh, June to see how that went. So we'll see.
Oh, we're finally now.
What's that? Oh, we are?
No, is that what we're doing right now or next year?
Uh, no, in May.
Oh, May, just May.
So we're gonna try it like in May and then uh, and then we're gonna be um, we'll make a decision I guess in, in June, whether we wanna see how it works. So, let's see. Also another thing where the, with the ID cards, where the kids have an ID card so you know if a student is on the bus. Mayo and I, they have to have an ID card. They, they, they uh, I guess.
Like an RFID.
Yeah, does that, and then when they get off, um, that might be a little more problematic, but the first two seem more doable. Um, so that's what the.
You know, if you got a sleeping kid on the bus that didn't get off, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the app because parents can't, like, they know the bus is coming around the corner. I don't know if any of you were part of that initial pilot, you were?
Yes.
It was, we didn't go well.
It didn't go well, so it was buggy.
There was a lot of delays. You just, it really wasn't accurate, but it got it.
Yeah.
So the bus was upon you and they were still 12 stops away.
Yeah, so we'll see how it, how it goes.
Okay, great. Anyone else? All right, we'll jump into the super cuts real quick.
Well, thank you. Um, Mr. Pigeon and the high school pathfinders are here to honor our students and teachers of the month. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, thank you and I really appreciate this opportunity and the tradition and the pride that we have in our student achievement and our teachers' achievement through the Student of the Month and Teacher of the Month program. Isabel Simonson with the, the, tonight, who is one of our pathfinders to help present, and she'll start with our presentation for January and February, and I will take care of March. As you see, we have some of our students here and some of our teachers. Uh, so it's exciting to share Student of the Month, Teacher of the Month for Amherst Central High School. Isabel.
Um, for January, our Teacher of the Month was Mr. Bauer and our students were Fatima Alzadani and Azra Nagambo. Um, for Fatima Alzadani, Ms. Will shared that Fatima is a student in her computer science principal's class, taking her second class in programming. She always comes to class with a smile on her face, works hard, and is willing to help out her fellow programmers. She has a very bright future in the STEM field. Mr. Berger added that Fatima is a strong, positive influence in class. She is kind and capable with a pragmatic, down-to-earth approach to learning. Mr. Berger offered Fatima is a strong, positive influence in class. She is top, oh, sorry. Mr. Pigeon also shared Fatima has acted as anime club treasurer for many years. In a club that brings an eclectic mix of students and levels of maturity, Fatima has always served as a role model, fun-loving, sharp sense of humor, and a positive person. Fatima has been an active member of many clubs and has contributed to many Amherst, and to, has contributed to Amherst in many versatile ways. Um, for Azra Nagambo, Mrs. Lash shared that Azra Nagambo is an excellent student and a kind and thoughtful person. His writing and his participation in English class have been outstanding. His writing has been chosen to use as an example many times. He is very deserving of this award. In Regent's Chemistry class, Azra is quiet but always focused in doing his work. He asks excellent questions and is always kind and respectful to his peers. Azra can light up a room with his smile and he is genuinely an outstanding young man. In addition to taking care of his academics, Azra is a member of the varsity football and varsity basketball teams. Both of these sports require a year-round commitment and rigorous training. Certainly, the time management skills and work ethic learned by being a multi-sport student athlete will help Azra tremendously in years to come. Coach Robinsky added that Azra is an awesome kid. He is consistently has a positive attitude, is a great friend to all those around him, and a natural born leader. As a football and basketball player, Azra is an excellent teammate and works his tail off to improve his skills and himself as well as his teammates. Mr. Bauer was nominated by four different students. Quinn and Lyle shared that he has done a great job in preparing a very young and inexperienced wrestling team for a long and difficult season. In the brief weeks leading up to the beginning of the season, he has already managed to instill a tremendous character and integrity in his wrestlers. He is unsung from his effort and aptitude source coaching. Rahib Banaf added that Mr. Bauer is the most supportive, the most funnyest, and the best teacher that has ever done it. He is very good at one-on-one or helping with one-on-five helping as he takes his time out of his day to help tackle tough problems and obstacles during school years. Mosheena Lee also added first person that came to mind when I thought about a Teacher of the Month. He's a great teacher and a great coach and also a really great guy. No one deserves it more in my opinion. Amir Alwan summed it up. Great coach, great teacher, and great man.
Oh, Asra's here. And Asra just came out. Just, just here and Asra. Congratulations. Did you catch all of that? Did you miss it? All right, I'm gonna reread it for you. That's your, your. Asra, this last shared that Asra Nagambo is an excellent student and a kind and thoughtful person. His writing and class participation in English has always been outstanding. His writing has been chosen as an example many times and he is deserving of this award. In Regent's Chemistry, Asra is a quiet but always focused in doing his work. He asks excellent questions, always kind and respectful to his peers. Asra can light up a room with his smile. And is genuinely outstanding young man. In addition to taking care of his academics, Asra is a member of the varsity football and varsity basketball teams. Both of these sports require year-round commitment and rigorous training. Certainly, the time management skills and work ethic learned by Asra in a multi-sport athletic environment will help Asra tremendously in the years to come. Coach Robinsky added, Asra's an awesome kid. He is consistently has a positive attitude, is a great friend to all those around him, and a natural born leader. As a football and basketball player, Asra is an excellent teammate and works his tail off to improve his skills and the skills of his teammates. Congratulations.
Okay, for February, our Teacher of the Month was Mrs. Kennesack, and the students were Elia Leeper and Adam Sarzinski. Adam Sarzinski, Mr. John shared Adam continues to excel both on and off the court here at Amherst. Adam is a great student role model for all of his peers. He is considered engaging in his classes diligent, motivated, interested, and above all, humble. Despite his many successes in both his advanced placement classroom and on the basketball court, Adam remains a friend to all, who is quick with a smile and willing to listen and chat with his peers. Congrats to Adam Sarzinski on a job well done. Mr. Spiel's offered Adam has always been seen with a smile on his face. He brings positive energy and action into class and loves being physically active. He is kind to each and every person he meets and always uses his manners, kind of rare in this day and age. Mr. Bauer added AP Chemistry, Adam possesses the rare ability to keep a sense of humor while completing the very difficult tasks involved in the AP cap. His ability to handle and effectively deal with stress is evident in his excellent performance on the most difficult of assessments. He also appreciates the quality of his class participation. He is willing to offer responses to questions but adds even more to class through the questions that he poses. Elia Leeper was nominated by a friend, Maddie Cantwell. Maddie shared that Elia was heavily involved with the production of Cats and is currently working to write and direct a drama club production with some of her classmates. She is always busy with something and is enrolled in AP level classes and crushing the coursework. She offers her input and answers questions in class more than anyone else in the classes I share with her and is a great person and friend in addition to keeping up with everything else. When maintaining her grades, she is an amazing friend and has reached out to her many times to help me out or give some advice. She is truly one of the smartest and kindest people I know and definitely deserves some recognition for all her hard work. Speaking of her Cats performance, Mr. Pomelart shared that Elia brought such an incredible and incredibly sensitive and loving approach to her portrayal of Jellie Lauren this year in the operetta Cats. She consistently gives 110% in her singing, always making music sung from her heart and soul, regardless of the style or genre. Elia has come so far as a singer and performer culminating with a heartfelt and memorable performance for the operetta audiences. Mrs. Kennesack was nominated by Mr. Whitmire. He shared that she is more than just a teacher. She's a life coach, a mentor, and a steadfast advocate for her students. She goes beyond academics, providing behavioral support and emotional guidance, always striving to ensure her students grow not just intellectually but also socially and emotionally. Mrs. Kennesack has the courage to engage in difficult conversations with students and families, always leading with honesty and compassion. She pushes her students to rise to their full potential, believing in them even when they struggle with their, to see their own strengths. Her parent dedication extends beyond the classroom. She is not only a pillar of support for her students but also a valued colleague. Mrs. Kennesack is the first to ask how you're doing, to offer a kind word, and to brighten the day with a warm smile in the hallway. Her energy is infectious, whether it's singing, dancing, or simply bringing joy to those around her. She lifts the spirits of students and staff alike. She works hard to ensure her students receive the services and support they need to succeed. She's relentless in her efforts, always going the extra mile to advocate what is best for her students. Mrs. Kennesack is not just an educator, she's a true asset to our school, a mentor, a leader, and a friend. I am proud to call her a tiger but more importantly, I am honored to call her a colleague and a friend.
And Miss Kennesack is here.
I think I'm really close.
Thank you Isabel, that was wonderful and a lot of good picking up of some of the typos there, so that was pretty smooth. I'll take care of March, starting with our Teacher of the Month who could not make it tonight. Ms. McNeil was nominated by her student, Mackenzie Cook. Mackenzie shared that she picked Ms. McNeil because she is a great teacher and can learn anything from her because she understands how important it is to be a role model. Mackenzie also shared she wants to be a teacher just like her someday. Mr. Pigeon added that Ms. McNeil is a dedicated, versatile teaching, teacher serving both as a literacy specialist and an English teacher, co-teaching as the ELA Teacher of Record in a diverse class of English 10 with a wide range of learning needs. Ms. McNeil has piloted the Wilson Reading Program at Amherst Central Schools, which is a unique world-class program for students with significant challenges with dyslexia. She has been so successful in this program, she needed to design a program for students once completed in that program that we've dubbed our Post-Wilson Program, an innovative support program focusing on grammar and usage in the context of organic reading and writing, the sort of skills needed for post-secondary success in college. Last year, one of her Wilson students was recognized by New York State as a Model Spokesperson for students with disability and was featured by the New York State Education Department as an epic special needs student success story, and she has readied herself for a top echelon college placement. So congratulations to Ms. McNeil. Savannah Murawski is here. Savannah was recommended by her friend Violet. Violet shared that Savannah is a great friend to me and others. She tries hard in school and does the difficult job of balancing her time between friends, getting her schoolwork done on time, and other things that she's involved with in school. She has been there for me and her surrounding friends forever, letting them come to her in times where they're hitting a rough patch. She would make a great nominee because of her impact on students and teachers alike. Mr. Calamari, Mr. Calamari shared that Savannah is one of the hardest-working students among her peers. She is focused and engaged on a daily basis and always shows up to class early and prepared. Savannah works diligently on her daily assignments, consistently manages her time well with regard to task completion. She works well with others, is an absolute joy to have in class. Mr. Flish shared, added that Savannah is one of the most talented students in his gourmet foods class. Her attention to detail when putting a dish together has led to amazing food being created by her group. Savannah is also putting her culinary skills to use at home, creating awesome dinners for her family. Mr. Hare also shared that Savannah is a hard-working and dedicated student and has shown consistent success in geometry this year. She approaches her work with focus and takes responsibility for her learning, often going beyond what is required. Her strong work ethic and steady approach to academics helped her stand out amongst her peers. Savannah is respectful, dependable, and a positive presence to have in the classroom. I believe Jackson Fox is out on, on baseball. Uh, Jackson Fox was nominated by his friend Nick Neer, who said that his friendship with Jackson is the best part of his day. Jackson may not be aware, but Nick wanted him to know what his good friendship means to him. Ms. Pence also shared that Jackson is a hard-working student and willing to help students if out there are struggling. Ms. Will offered that Jackson is a very conscientious student. He works hard and is willing to help others along the way. He carries one of the highest averages in their class and is a pleasure to work with. Ms. Carpetti also added that Jackson Fox is an excellent choice for Student of the Month more. Whether in the classroom with his teachers or with his fellow classmates, Jackson is a young man of high character, maturity, and very personal. Jackson has a love for sports as he is a member of Amherst's varsity football team, basketball, and starting catcher for our baseball team. Jackson Fox, congratulations. January, February, March, and as always, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, and you know, we know that good children are often the result of good parenting, so it's nice to see some of our parents here tonight supporting their kids who are being nominated as Students of the Month, and our staff, you know, hear all the wonderful things about them going above and beyond, and we really appreciate you being here and congratulations to you. We are gonna transition to a report from our Special Education and Personnel Services. You're welcome to stay, but we do understand if you wanna get on for the rest of your evening at this point. Thank you for being here and congratulations.
Your teachers are waiting 10-year half the way.
I can, but he might not.
So, welcoming Dr. Otto and Mr. Rogers to the neighborhood to present about Special Education and PPS. Welcome.
Hard, hard act of follow-up with our students, but thank you guys for having us. Um, just as a reminder, we're actually presenting three presentations in one, so we're doing the required Medicaid update and School Counseling Plan. We decided to flip it and start with the most exciting with Medicaid, and I got the shorts cut, so I'm gonna start with Medicaid, um, and then we'll move into the Student Services presentation following those three things. So as far as our Medicaid update, um, some of you will recall that we were required to create a Medicaid compliance program. When you reach a threshold of over $500,000 in revenue, you're required to have one. Conveniently, that changed after we created, so they shifted it to a million dollars, so now, um, we've updated and maintained that Medicaid compliance program, but it's not technically required because we're not at a million in terms of the revenue. The Medicaid revenue that we are generating is largely the result of students that are Medicaid eligible and our staff members that claim, um, their services. So there's a lot of factors that go into like the variations that you see, including how prescriptions are written by physicians. So there's things that would make it count towards eligibility and things that make it not count. Um, one of the things that we do as part of the Medicaid compliance program, we train annually, so we have a new Medicaid provider or someone that oversees our Medicaid program through Kenny, and they offer training this tax fall to all of our staff. Um, but that is really it for the Medicaid update. I'm gonna shift gears to the Counseling Plan updates.
Could you give us just an example of some types of services that are Medicaid eligible?
Yeah, so typically our speech, our OT, and our PT services are where we would get our claims from. And again, there's very specific things, so like OT and PT, there's a prescription that's required from a physician for us to be able to claim it, and so there's weird things like if the physician writes and the dates don't match, it wouldn't count as something that we could claim. So there's a lot of oversight that goes into it from our office in terms of asking again for a prescription so that it matches. Um, and then our therapists are logging all of their services in our frontline system. And we are generally trying to, um, keep records of students even if they aren't Medicaid eligible in the event that they become Medicaid eligible because you can later count it. So if they become Medicaid eligible later. But it's generally our related services that you're getting revenue from. Um, as far as the counseling plan, we present on this annually as well. There is an advisory council that happens annually. We just had it at the end of March. And the advisory council, the goal is they're gonna be providing input and support into our counseling plan. The counseling plan is intended to be a comprehensive program that's looking at academic, social, emotional, um, and also career readiness. So we're looking at how our PPS staff support our students to achieve those goals. There are targets that are based on data, so we use our data to generate targets and our advisory council contributes to those ideas. The advisory council is comprised of district and building-level leaders. There's parents, there's students. Um, we also have teachers that are in attendance and community partners, so we had Amherst Youth Present. And so part of what they do is they, um, kind of celebrate some of the accomplishments from the previous year, and I'll talk about that very briefly. But we also look at what our goals are for the following year and come up with some intervention plans related to that. Previously, our data, um, when we looked at our counseling data, it was looking at things like parenting, um, related to like things like attendance, where some of the things that we saw were elevated in our data. We also saw that, uh, some of our students were coming in with a lack of coping skills, a lack of social skills. So those are some of the things that you're gonna see are emphasized across the counseling plan is addressing those things that were elevated with our data. So I'm not gonna go into this in great detail, other events I mentioned, you've heard about these. So when our buildings presented, they presented some of these things to you. So for example, the middle school talked about their attendance plan. Um, that's aligned with our counseling plan. You heard, um, probably Smallwood talking about "We Starts With Me" and talking about the community circles, and that is also aligned with the counseling plan. Or Windermere talking about, um, speed levels and sound levels. Those are all related to that skill building, um, again, associated with our counseling plan, so aligned to our strategic plan. And then you've also heard about diversity. Um, you heard Marcy talking about the theme of "All Are Welcome" and starting with that book. Again, all those things are part of our counseling plan, but they're also aligned with our strategic plan. One of the things that we have been working on, part of it is related to the mental health grant, but we've been trying to streamline our referral data. So whenever someone is having, a student is having a difficulty in the classroom, whether it's social, emotional, social skills, behavioral, they may refer for counseling. And so we've been trying to get a sense of what that looks like. We don't wanna make it a difficult task for teachers to access counselors or for students to access counselors. So our PPS staff has started to record, um, basically the context they're having and the reason the student was referred, so we could kind of get an understanding and get ahead of what some of those referrals are so we can work smarter. Um, essentially, as a PPS group, we review that counseling referral data. We look at what do we think the hypothesized needs are, and then we come up with plans around what interventions may support our students. So, um, we look at it in decent detail. This is just telling you counseling referrals. So you may be wondering like why might someone work with one of our lovely people that are here for counseling? And there's a number of reasons that students might get referred. Um, you'll see that there are some patterns and that's what we look for. So if there are patterns and we're seeing that there's a lot of students that are coming in with a particular need, we're trying to work smarter. So rather than having 20 kids get referred to Mrs. Stazio, maybe it means teaching the teacher about that particular skill that those 20 kids are lacking. So looking at more of like a tier-one, um, intervention. So some of the patterns that you may notice, these are just, um, along the bottom you'll see the referral reason. Um, but there are patterns. So at middle school and high school, and this is really for sake of just understanding how the roles are different, there's a significant amount of time that's spent with academic advisement. There's a lot of counselors, you're gonna be talking about scheduling and career options. Um, so while sometimes when you think of our PPS staff, you're thinking of mental health, that's not all they do because the counseling program has to do with career and academics as well. So a significant amount of time is spent with academic advisement at our upper, um, levels. And then you're gonna see that there's still, um, a lot of students that need mental health support, social skills support, anxiety. Those are kind of our big hitters across middle school and high school. I would say elementary that's also a big hitter. But one of the things that you're gonna notice is behavior becomes a more glaring, um, and apparent need at the elementary buildings. Some of that I attribute to like, there's a different system that Windermere's using now. So you're gonna see like, Windermere has a high number of those behavior referrals, but it's also because they've started to have these requests for assistance, so it's easier to track where that's coming from. But the reason we look at this is it helps us to determine what your next step would be. So if we're seeing that a significant number of referrals are for behavior, then we should be looking at classroom management. How do we ensure that the classroom is super engaging so that behaviors are not significant? And it also has to go hand-in-hand with social skills and coping skills, so teaching our students some of those things that they may be lacking. We look, um, to see if there's patterns across month as well. And again, this is so you can get ahead of it. If we know that January's a hard time after a holiday break, then let's intend on that and come up with a plan so that we can be supporting those transitions. One of the major things that's come from this is looking at major transitions in our students' lives. So the transition, um, from elementary to middle school, that's a big transition, that's a tough transition. So this year, we've been focusing on how can we make that transition easier? We've been talking about executive functioning skills. How do you organize yourselves? How do you get from class to class? How do you do it on a time? Because those are skills that at the elementary level aren't as pronounced, aren't as needed because you have teachers guiding you down the hallway. You have, um, you know, people telling you when you're switching to another subject. So, um, a lot of our PPS efforts have been looking at how to support some of those transitions based on the patterns that we're seeing. Another thing we look at is referral source. So if, um, sometimes people hypothesize maybe it's all coming from so-and-so and we're getting all these referrals. The reason we look at this is it tells us if people need training, you know? So if you're seeing tons of referrals are coming from a particular teacher, well, maybe that teacher needs some support. Um, generally speaking, we see that at the secondary level, most of the referrals are students. Students coming to seek that support. Um, or PPS staff referring based on things they saw based on grades or something else might have referred for academic advisement. Whereas at the elementary, this shouldn't be much of a surprise. Parents and teachers are making up the bulk of our referrals, although you will notice, um, there's an increase with admin referrals again based on those requests for assistance when you look at Windermere's data. We also looked at it as segregated, so you noticed that one of the targets was diversity. And one of the reasons it is a target is we know, um, that our minority students are a vulnerable population. Um, and there's a lot of reasons that would go into that, but we look at enrollment based on race. So along the left, you're seeing district enrollment based on race. And then across each building, you're looking at the percentage of students that are referred based on race. Um, the reason you'll see some are highlighted is it's showing that it's disproportionate. So for example, for white students, we have 62% of our students on beds today that are enrolled and identify as white. You would expect that your percentage of referrals for counseling would match that. It would be pretty close to 62%. So when you see that it's not matching that, it's telling us that certain populations are being referred more than others. Um, and one of the populations we're seeing that that's true for is our black or African-American students. Um, those are the ones that are highlighted. The reason you see Smallwood's highlighted a little differently is their population, I've looked at it two different ways. So I looked at it district-wide and then I looked at it by building to see if there were differences. Smallwood's population actually is 77% white. So, um, I highlighted it because it looks disparate, it actually isn't. Um, it's, it's reflecting exactly what their percentage is, but they only have 6% that identify as black. So you're still seeing a disproportionate number of black students that would be referred for counseling. We also looked at it based on students with disabilities, students that are coming from homes where more than one language is spoken, and then by gender, male and female. So again, you see students with disabilities are a population that is more vulnerable. And again, this is telling us what we need to think bigger about how we're addressing this because one person is not able to see all the students with disabilities and provide counseling. We're gonna need to think about how do we address that globally to support our students. Um, you also see it's, um, males are more referred at elementary and females are more often referred at the secondary level. Again, so the data's imperfect, but these are just showing us patterns so that we can start to plan ahead and look at it more systemically. Um, the last piece is just looking at the types of counseling that are referred. So you may be wondering like, what does that look like? So if a student gets referred, what, um, what might they receive? And again, there's patterns. Um, you're gonna see academic advisement as a bulk at our secondary level. Um, but again, some of the things you're gonna notice are more scheduled interventions. So middle school and high school, they might get a pass to go to see the counselor, or the students might come copping down to see a counselor. You're gonna see more of a spread across Smallwood and Windermere, where sometimes it's the teacher that's referring, sometimes it's a phone call from a parent. Um, but there, there's a lot more tier-one support, which would make sense, um, that we're seeing a lot of kids that don't, when they're little, like kindergarten, they don't have a lot of coping skills coming in. So our PPS staff, rather than pulling the students, are pushing in and providing consultation or providing support, um, around those needs. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, who's gonna do the third part of our, start, the third part of our presentation for the Student Services update.
Thanks Ryan. So you guys made it through the first two. We only have one more presentation. Um, so in Student Services, um, the foundation of any quality education program is having a comprehensive and quality strategic plan, which we are blessed to have here at Amherst. Um, then, we align all of our actions with that plan. So as you can see, we're gonna briefly cover. So as you can see, we're going to briefly cover these three categories, teaching and learning, student life, and Amherst pride, aligning with our strategic plan. So we're going to start out with teaching and learning. We are constantly in special education, as you can probably see through the counseling plan, we're constantly tracking and monitoring data and numbers to make sure that not only are we using our resources effectively, but also efficiently, because we only have so much to go around. The first slide here is kind of an FYI, a change in IDEA determination. So IDEA is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. That's the federal law that governs special education rights and regulations. So essentially, the federal government has, or monitors, all of the different states and their compliance within many, many different aspects of special education. New York State was flagged by the federal government as in need of assistance. It blows downhill from there, so New York State then comes to the districts, and they monitor the individual districts and their compliance across the multitude of areas. So our SPP indicators, or State Performance Plan indicators, are things that we in special education report on annually. So there's 18 indicators, so they'll be like, hey, this year you have to report on SPP 10 or SPP 4. And they just look at a ton of different things, including suspension, disproportionate representation, timely evaluations, graduation rates, strappo rates of students with disabilities, amongst a whole host of other things. The reason that I'm bringing this up is, right now, currently through this school year, we have to report in a whole host of different ways. Sometimes they'll audit us and say, hey, send us 20 individualized education plans of students. Or maybe they'll just pull some of our past data and look at things like disproportionality. They are reworking the system for next year. A lot of the details remain to come out, we don't have necessarily all of the details. But right now, what we do know is there's going to be a point system based on compliance and performance. They're then going to put it into a matrix that aligns to many of the different indicators. And what we have been told from the state is that while we routinely evaluate our students and reuse the quote from the state and make the decisions that best interest the students, we anticipate a significant number of districts are going to be flagged as in need of assistance or possible non-compliance across one or several of these indicators. So if the changes next year result in us being flagged, obviously, we're going to do what we need to do in compliance. Moving on into our personal data, I'm going to try and give you guys a general overview, and I'll skate through these slides kind of quickly, but I want to give you an overview of the state of special education in Amherst across school-age children and preschool. So if you look at this first slide, this is just a nice overview of past data with 24, 25 being the current year, obviously. If you notice, these are the number of total students identified during this school year as a student with a disability. So during the COVID year 2021, we were at about 400 students in school age. So CSE is school-age special education, CPSE is preschool education, so before they are in our schools. Right now, in 24, 25, we currently have 505 students in school age classified as students with disabilities, so you notice a pretty marked increase from 2020 to the present year. Likewise, in CPSE, you see that there were 57 preschool students with disabilities, and currently there are 96. So when I look at that data, it begs the question, why are there so many more students classified with disabilities? And that's sort of some of the data that we've dug into from there. The next slide is just CSE referrals and eligibility.
Sorry, say it again.
How many kids do we have in the CPS, CPSE?
CPSE expands for H3-25, so this number is inclusive of both. So that 24, 25 is to date based on April 4th. We have 96 students that receive some level of special education service. That includes things like kids that get speech-only to kids that maybe are in a special class.
But how many kids in total are there?
All of the students in our district, so, well, all of the preschool.
It's not UPK-specific.
Correct.
It's talking about any student that's between ages of 3 and 5 that resides within Amherst.
So it's probably more than 50%?
Well.
Not necessarily.
I'm not sure, we'd have to have, we'd have to know all the students, like, it's not based on enrollment. Like, we wouldn't have access to that data, it's based on who is 3 to 5.
Could you get that number? Because that just seems like an unusually high number. I mean, we have 2,800 kids in the district, we have 800 kids that go to private. So that's 3,600 kids, so it's not that big a percentage of kids that don't go to us. So that number is an extremely high number, as a percentage, it's very high. The other, the other number is 20-some percent.
You think we have roughly 220 to 240 kindergarteners every year? And that would be two grade levels you're counting, grade for 3-year-olds and 4-year-olds, if you're assuming our incoming kindergarteners are 5-year-olds. So it would be, you know, roughly 500 with 96, so 20%, which is on the, on the high end. If you're looking at special education programming for school-age children, you're usually, depending on the district, depending on certain demographics, school-age students, you're looking between 15 and 20%. If you're pushing 20%, you're on the high end. The other context around the Committee on Preschool Education, two things, and I'll get into it a little bit later in the slides. But that 96 does not mean that 96 students are then classified. So when a preschool student turns school age, my lovely like five days of meetings coming up in about a month, not all of those students are typically found eligible. So we'll only take a fraction of that into school-age special education.
Eligibility for preschool special education operates entirely different than eligibility for school-age special education. So for a student to be eligible as a preschool student with a special education need, they just have to show one area of severe need or two areas of moderate need. So for example, if a child had a severe speech articulation need, they'd be identified. Whereas at school age, there's 13 classifications and you have to fit into one of those. So we anticipate the number would be lower as they go in, but we always look at it because it gives us an indication of where there's pockets that may be high, where we're going to have to anticipate a higher number at K.
And the only other context, just like in the back of your mind, CSE school-age services, we service with our providers. If we send a kid to an outside agency, say they have a developmental disability, severe level 3 autism, and we send them to Summit as a school-age student, that's on our books. County services for preschool are funded by Erie County, so that's not directly dating us. So looking at, well, it's a little difficult. The first thing, we saw the increase. So we looked at the number of students referred year over year, and then also our eligibility rate. So that's the rate with which we find students eligible at initial determination meetings. So either the school district or the parents will initiate an initial eligibility request. We will then go to an initial eligibility meeting, and in 2021, we had 47 initial meetings. This current year, through the current date of February, or I'm sorry, April 4th, we had 44 initial eligibility referrals. So they have largely remained consistent, with the exception of this year, which is incomplete data, but I do expect that we're right around 70 students. And our eligibility rates have remained largely the same. So we had, we were finding 62% of students eligible, 64, 66. And then these past two years, we've actually found a lower percentage of students that have come and been referred to us as eligible. The next slide we have, sorry, is out of those referrals, where have those referrals came from? So we always want to take our resources and direct them most effectively. So I thought that this is a really useful sign. In the early, or in the COVID year, you saw that most of the referrals were from parents. 2021, 22, it kind of moved back to, with 42 referrals being from the building, as opposed to a lesser 33 from parents. And then since then, we've seen a high number of parent referrals and a lower number from our building ISD processes. We have a couple hypotheses about why that is. Some of our work around building-level ISD processes provide academic intervention supportive services. So as our programs improve and our systems improve within the building, it's nice to see those numbers trending down. Alternatively, we do have a very high number of parent referrals to special education. And what that means is, proactively speaking, the conversation, the training we have with our PPS staff and our teachers who are interacting with those parents can be directed to move that conversation towards, okay, is the most appropriate way or avenue to go through a special education referral? Or is this case, and whatever your son or daughter's going through, most appropriately serviced at the building level before it gets to special education? So hopefully, some of those referrals from parents, we start seeing to trend down as those conversations are had with parents.
Do you think that's a factor in why the eligibility has gone down the last few years? Because more of the referrals have come from parents?
So one part is we are taking, so I'll answer that in twofold, it's a great question though. I think yes, if you traditionally, and I don't have that data right in front of me, but if you look IST referrals, so referrals that come from our building and our school psychologists through the instructional support team, they have done the work needed, they have interventions in place, and that student is still struggling. So I would say yes, those cases are found at a higher eligibility rate. And parent referrals, oftentimes you get parent referrals where they're like, well, I think, you know, my son or daughter's just struggling a little bit, so why don't we evaluate them?
You just don't have the expertise as much as...
Correct, or sometimes they're near, students like my son and my daughter, they're near and dear to my heart, so I worry about them a little bit more and I want those answers. So I do see that those referrals as being found ineligible more often. The other piece that I will say is that we have students coming in, and sometimes they come from a charter school or the city of Buffalo, and they might not have the education programming to the high level that we have in here, here in Amherst. So these students, they come into the class and they look like they're really struggling. But are they struggling, and this is what we've tried to disseminate, is are they struggling because of a true disability? Or are they struggling because of a lack of attendance, or maybe a lack of appropriate instruction? So we've been looking at these students and giving them time within our educational programming to make sure that it's a true educational disability and not just a lack of appropriate education.
Thank you.
Moving on. Oh, man, you're ahead of me. So then we looked at the same thing for CPSE, which is preschool education. The number of students referred and all referrals at the preschool level come through the parents. There is no building-based process, because most of those students aren't even within our buildings. The number of referred students has went up, and our eligibility rates have largely remained the same. We have 505 students currently this year as classified as students with disabilities, which was a high number from that 400 we saw five years ago. And I still don't have an answer as to why. So we started looking into type movements, students with disabilities who were moving into the district and out of the district. And as you can see, we have a couple more move-ins than move-outs every single year. But if you look at the numbers for this current year, 65 students with disabilities moving in and 23 students with disabilities moving out, that's, you know, a net gain of 42 students with disabilities. So that accounts for a large chunk of that overall year-over-year increase as to our students with disabilities and the number increase.
So did they come in with disabilities, or did we?
Yeah, yeah, so, great question. They, in New York State, actually federally, but it works a little bit different if you're out of state as opposed to a New York State to New York State transfer. If they come in from any other district with an individualized education plan, we need to inherit that individualized education plan with comparable services. So if they come in with special education services, we are giving them special education services. This is always, we try to be proactive with everything we do, but looking and forecasting, not only looking at the past data, but forecasting out as far as we possibly can with our preschool members helps us plan and allocate resources for the upcoming school years. So if you look, the acronyms at the top, CIT is Special Education Itenorant Teacher. You have SKIZ, which is Special Class Integrated Setting. You have SE, which is Special Class, and you have RSO, which is Related Services Only. What I would say is CIT and SKIZ, the first two columns, are students you would expect. So that 10 and 7, so the highlighted yellow line is our incoming kindergarteners in September. That 10 and 7, you would expect to be considered for like integrated setting. So like a normal kindergarten class with the support of a special ed teacher. Self-contained SE would be students we look for our special classes, which are either Windermere or Smallwood. Or if their needs exceed what we can provide here at Amherst, we would look for outside agency settings. And then Related Services Only are students who receive speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, or counseling. And while 27 looks a little bit high, most of those students, more likely than not, would not be found eligible as needing services coming into school age. Shifting gears a little bit into TCIS data. The New York State Education Department, beginning this year, has required us to report annually on the State Information Reporting System on any student behavioral interventions. That means that we are now required to report on any time we have a physical restraint or the use of a timeout room with a student. The number of interventions actually tracks, not exclusively when we have a physical restraint or the use of a timeout, that number of 130 and 104 is actually inflated because we are using it as data tracking to any incident that escalated to a point where a teacher would want to report it. The marked decrease you see to 35 is good news, but it's for a number of reasons. One is because we have changed the way in which we fill out the reports. Those 35 largely constitutes either the use of a timeout room or a physical restraint. We've only had eight students, which is wonderful. But we also attribute that to the number of tier-one and tier-two intervention that is going on in Windermere and Smallwood, our elementary schools, where these predominantly occur. So I know that Marcy and Nicole have been pushing, pushing counseling into the classrooms to support some of the social, emotional needs there, as well as the addition of Matt Jackson at Smallwood to support the counseling needs in Smallwood.
But this one's TCIS.
Oh, good question. Therapeutic Crisis Intervention and Support. So TCIS, it has two prongs, it has, it's a very proactive model, so it has de-escalation techniques used to support students in crisis. But it also has the physical restraint if, for some reason, a situation arises to that level of crisis and we need to maintain the safety of an environment. So we train annually members of every building with TCIS. This year currently, so we have an annual four-day, full four-day training for these members. This year, we've trained nine additional members, and we have about 50 TCIS members across the four buildings. Now, that's all I have for data right now. Now on to some of the more fun things. So Julian Grover, who is our Transition Coordinator, has got a really neat partnership with People Inc., and it is called PreX, or the Pre-Employment Transition Services. This is a once-a-month push-in into the students in our high school 12-1, Mary Bev Whitze's classroom, where they're teaching vocational skills, pre-vocational job training, self-ambitacy, resume building, things of that nature, they push in free of cost and facilitate those sessions, so that's awesome. We also have a partnership with Wheels for Workers. So this is a vocational internship that we have for the students predominantly in Mary B's self-contained room. This is located at St. Paul's and headed by them, which also coincidentally houses our Family Support Center. But it's a really great program, if you've ever seen it, where they have like outback, they have a shed, they have a gajillion bikes out there, and, and they actually work with the students to fix up the bikes, repair them, and then donate them to families in need. If you look at the picture on the right-hand side, that was actually a bike that was donated from that program to one of our middle school students in need.
I'm going to toss it back to you. I'm going to skip, we're going to talk about student life. Again, from the strategic plan, one of the objectives, and again, this isn't until next year, but is to look at proactive, positive, research-based classroom management strategies district-wide. So in an effort to get prepared for that, we pulled together a team. We have building admin represented and district admin represented. And we came up with goals to reduce the suspension rates for students with disabilities. As part of that work, we also decided we, in looking at the data, we wanted to make sure our office discipline referrals were consistent across all of the buildings. We were noticing some inconsistencies where certain things might have been titled. We were noticing some inconsistencies where certain things might have been titled differently, but it meant the same thing. So we tried to align that with our code of conduct. We looked at what can you do before a student enters like suspension? Like what interventions can be put in place to support our students with skills that are probably landing them into these disciplinary consequences? So we are looking at a check-in, check-out system with data collection to try to support our students across the board when they're having difficulties, making sure there's a trusted adult that they can connect with. And then we also are developing a professional development plan around classroom management in concert with Lindsay Office. We've been talking about CHAMP and trying to initiate some programming around classroom management just generally to address some of the high behavioral needs that we saw with our data and to, you know, better support classroom management. Another piece of our student life, this is ongoing, but we have done book studies every year, as you guys know, trying to address our new special education population. We hired many, many special education teachers when we went fully integrated. And we want to make sure that their professional development is strong. So we've chosen different topics each year. This year, we chose executive functioning and skills with our students because we are seeing that those transitions can be tricky, making sure that students really know how to organize themselves. So that is a focus and it helps with classroom management. If students are disorganized or disrupted, it's going to be hard for the teacher to, you know, teach. We also started looking at lessons, both at the elementary levels and middle school to help support the transition. So that's ongoing work, but that's one of the pieces we looked at.
And then Amherst Pride, which is some of the fun individual programs that we offer not only students, but parents. And the first is our Licensed Marriage and Family Therapist through our partnership with Horizon Health Services. This is Gabby, and she's actually available, I don't want to misspeak. I was gonna say Tuesdays, 4 to 6, so in the evening hours. To up until this point, she has helped support 11 families. So this has been in place since this October, it's fairly recent, with limited evening hours. But she has been able to support 11 different families through this counseling and therapy relationship. Then we also have a partnership with the Horizon Safer Program. So the Horizon counselors that are present in each of our buildings, as well as the Family Support Center, are trained in the Safer Program. What this is, or what this does is it educates adolescents and youths on the adverse effects and the dangers of substance abuse. So what would happen is if there was a noted concern in any of our buildings, our PPS staff would then refer to the Horizon counselor, or the Family Support Center and the Horizon staff, who would then assess the students, determine their level of need, which would then look at duration and frequency of counseling and sessions to support their need around drug and substance abuse.
Another quick update, as you know, we have the Mental Health Awareness and Training Grant, where we were awarded $500,000. We're in year three of this grant to date. Again, kudos to Laura and Lynn and to Mike for their support with this. But we have to date trained 489 staff members to make them more aware of the symptoms and warning signs regarding mental health. And then this plan continues throughout this year and for the summer, so we can get everyone trained. We also this year just started doing the Teen Mental Health First Day. So youth mental health first day, the adults are the audience. For teen mental health first day, the students are the audience. So our 10th graders have gone through training. Kristy Grossman and Sarah Tully at our high school became trainers. And they are now training our students in this curriculum. It's done as part of their PE program. So they're doing this across the months of March and April and training our students to be aware of the signs and symptoms in their peers so that we can make sure that students are being connected with mental health supports. And then lastly, for me at least, then I'm going to go to Ryan. We did, I'm part of the SMART collaboration, which is a collaboration that's put out through Bosse's and it has to do with supporting mental health by advocating for resources. So there's district representation, mental health representation. As part, they meet four times per year. And one of their spring meetings, they actually had a physician panel that was presented to schools about how to collaborate with physicians. So if a student, for example, was hospitalized, how do we re-enter that student? How do we support that student? As a result of that, there was a request from school staff that we think it needs to be two-way. Like how do you communicate with the school so that we can better support the students as they re-enter? So I was able to be part of a panel the end of March with some colleagues across other districts. And we presented to the Buffalo Physician Panel, so I had the privilege of representing Amherst. There was a huge representation. We were able to educate them on some of the special education pieces. A lot of times within special education, you'll get notes from physicians, like this student needs special education or you need to do acts for this student. So just educating them on the process and the supports that are available within a school outside of special education to try to support our families better.
So the last three slides we have are actually trainings and support programs designed to support parents. The first one is Screen Sanity. And this is a webinar that's designed to teach parents about the unhealthy side effects of different screen uses. So what it does is it ultimately gives knowledge to the parents and then allows them, or gives them the tools needed to develop essentially a digital plan for their kids within their home. The Co-Parenting Program is the second one that we are going to highlight. This was in a collaboration with the Clarence School District. It is for parents from, or children who are age birth to 11. This is a program that was reduced, or that was designed to give parents insights and strategies to work with difficult parent, or difficult students who might have conduct disorder, are struggling in the home environment. And it's a way to support them with their parenting needs. And then the last one in the same vein is the Triple P Positive Parenting Program, which is in collaboration with Epic, which is Every Person Influences Children. So this was supported by our Family Support Center. But then they also had staff trained from Epic linked in through Zoom digitally. And what the program topics and training were, we're dealing with disobedience, fighting, aggression, all the way through just solid routines and structure within the home life. But it focuses on maintaining positive relationships between parents and their kids because it's so easy for us as parents to fall into this rut of corrective behavior. And you're doing this wrong, you're doing that wrong. And I heard this like saying, it was if you tell your kids that Santa Claus exists, they're going to believe you. And if you tell them that you put tooth under your pillow at night and the tooth fairy is going to come and leave you a dollar, they believe you. So if you tell your kid they're bad, they're probably going to believe you. But if you tell them that they're strong and they're kind and they're smart, they're also going to believe that. And that's the philosophy that they use in Triple P, which is creating positive relationships with families. That was long. I apologize. Thank you for your attention. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I, um, this is like, I mean, I'm trying to think about what, what it was like when I was in high school, in chief of high school. But how many counselors in the middle school and high school are there per student? Like what, like a, what is, like a counselor in the high school or middle school?
They would say the ratio should be 250 to 1. And that's actually part of our counseling plan, what we review. We are well within that.
Who says that? What does that say?
That would be ASCAS, so the Association for School Counselors. That's their organization. That's what they recommend. When we look at PPS across not just counselors, but social workers, school psychologists, we are well within those like recommendations.
Do the, how do the, do the counselors feel like 250 is, yeah, yeah, that's good? Or do they feel like, are overwhelmed by 250?
Everyone feels overwhelmed in their position, I would say. I think 250, I, I don't think they would think that was unreasonable because those are the recommendations. But you can imagine if it was 250 students that you were seeing weekly, that would be pretty intense. But a lot of these students are coming for maybe career counseling once a year or maybe scheduling adjustments a couple of times a year. So they're looking at it more from those numbers when you're talking ASCAS because ASCAS are for school counselors. So it's just the recommendations are different.
I would also say two things can be simultaneously true. I think, and it came up at the counseling, we have the counseling plan meeting where Maria spoke about, where we bring all of the stakeholders in. I think there's a recognition that we staff our PPS and position them well here in Amherst. Our staffing ratios are good, and I think there's recognition of that from them. But they can also understand that the workload and the mental, or the social emotional need of the students right now are high. So they feel, yes, we have a good staffing ratio, but yes, we can also simultaneously be stressed out and understand how hard their job is.
Yeah. And then I, I want to ask then on the slide there about the, the racial.
I'm not going to be able to find it, but I'll get there eventually.
So were those categories, I remember I asked this question with a different presentation. Were those categories, are those ones that the state requires?
Yeah, it's based on the state report card. So, and those, that enrollment data is based on the state report card as well.
And I'll, I guess I'll make the same comment I made then. It seems like, again, my last year of teaching, I know there's a significant Middle Eastern population in my classes. Maybe the largest minority group in my classes was, was the Middle Eastern students. And they're invisible in that. And it seemed like it would be helpful if not the state or the federal government asking us, it would be useful for us to do that.
We actually do, we actually do look at that. So within our counseling data, they do have the opportunity to report out on that. It just would be impossible for me to compare it because the state doesn't do it that way. So it's hard to know, is that disparate? Is that where it should be? But we, we do look at that and we're absolutely right. We have a high population of Arabic Muslims, so that's absolutely true.
So we would know, you would have information like, is that, are those, that group of students have kind of higher needs than the rest of the, I guess, white category?
You would just, it would be hard to extrapolate that out. And it's also based on how that family identifies. So if the family identifies in enrollment as white, whether they're Arabic or otherwise, then you still wouldn't have that data. And our staff are reporting based on what they know to be true. So it's still based on whatever was in ASCAS.
But if the family is only given those categories to, by which to identify, then they don't have, it's hard for them to identify anything else but white.
Yeah. State, state reporting is, and we've had this conversation, and it's a cabinet administratively too, which is we agree there's value in desegregating that data even further because there's a big distinction between Middle Eastern and the Polish guy who grew up in, you know, suburbia of America. So we take time, we desegregate that through the counseling data. But the hard part is when the state, like all of this is comparing our data, our counseling data, to the state-provided data. We desegregate it, and we could actually get those numbers to you. We desegregate that further, but then we have nothing to compare it to. So we just stay in that.
So it would be useful if we lobbied the state to make a new category?
My hope is that with their initiatives, my hope, not them would, is that they get the message. But I, I do find some value in disseminating or desegregating that data further. Oh, sorry, any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Great. I need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion to approve new business, item D, consent of new business personnel and financial items.
A second, any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business, item D, consent of new business personnel and financial items, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, six zero. Congratulations to everyone who's achieved tenure. It's a big accomplishment. We have 22 people, it looks like, from our agenda that just achieved. So congratulations to all of you. And so I know it's a big accomplishment in your careers. And we are glad to have you here. Mr. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
I didn't know if we still had to follow up on Mr. Vero's question about preschool students. I'm sorry?
I would like us to follow up on that.
Okay. So you would like to know how many preschool students reside within our district?
Well, put the percentage of the 96%. So however you want to come up with the number.
How, my question, I guess, so like I could have a three-year-old at home or a four-year-old at home who's now registered in our UPK program, but technically in kindergarten they would go. My question is how would we gain that? Like it would be almost like.
All the students don't send their kids to school in our district. If you're looking at.
What we could do.
I guess the fact that it doubles is not that important, so.
What we could do, in, in my mind, is kind of to Laura's point, is we could average like, hey, in kindergarten, in first grade, like in an average class cohort, we have X amount of students. 96 compared to an average cohort and work out a percentage of that. It wouldn't be perfect, but it could get you a ballpark number in my mind.
Well, I think we already did that.
Which, about 20%, which is what I would, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the best we could do without knowing all the three and four-year-olds in the community.
Yeah.
So it's still doubled though?
Oh, from, from the COVID years, yes, we have seen more increases. And that could be, you know, in, in my mind, an add to this, Maria, if you think. But as COVID, obviously, we're low years, so, or we're low numbers because, for whatever reason. But moving on from there, there have been some deficits, whether there's a lack of services, a lack of providers. Or in my mind, the advent of social media, and I know it's not new, but as there's venues digitally to communicate and parents are aware of more resources or they say, come across someone else who refers and they see it on a message board or something, and they're like, ooh, I got this great idea. And then they just throw out a referral because there's no part of it.
I also wonder if you're catching it earlier. So we've expanded our footprint in terms of our UPK, which means you have more eyes on students, teachers that are seeing kids that may be present as delayed. Whereas we may not have caught that until kindergarten. Now those screenings are happening sooner, typically following a preschool screening. Parents are advised, like you have the right to refer. And then we get many referrals that, okay, so when students are going through their UPK screening, parents will sorely after that write letters. And that's, the bulk, I would say, of the referrals we get starts in the start of the year. And I think largely it's because our preschool teachers are telling the parents, hey, I'm a little concerned about Johnny's writing or Johnny's speech or Johnny's sensory concerns. So I suspect that that could be part of it. You might see it plateau in terms of not as many initial referrals in kindergarten because they've already been caught.
Yeah, that early identification.
And who's providing those services?
They're provided by the county. So preschool is kind of a different follow-up altogether. County funds it, county provides the services. The district is more like a liaison.
Good? All right. We have no executive session tonight, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, six zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.